Welcome to the Thursday, October 8, 2020, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. School committee is using the Zoom meeting platform to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming the meeting on channel twelve, and a recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as possible after the meeting. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Kevin. We have correspondence.
Thank you, Ryan. The following correspondence was recorded. Several email letters regarding the hybrid learning model and encouraging more in-person education for students in the elementary grades and/or special education students from Lauren Brady on September twenty-second, Kim and Tony Boudry on September twenty-third, Cameron Burke on September eighteenth, Jessica Bushy on September twenty-fourth, Alina Garcia on September twenty-first, Lauren Davis on September twenty-second, Bernadette and Mike Dunerben on September twentieth, Christina Fleming on September twenty-third and September twenty-sixth, Danielle Goodman on September twenty-third, Jasmine Hutchinson on September twenty-fourth, Gillian Jusko on September twenty-third, Ashley Keen two times on September twenty-ninth, Kristi Landraveill on September twenty-fifth, Doreen and Kirk Miriam on September twenty-second, Janelle Ocampo on September twenty-fifth, Megan Perry on September twenty-second, Lockie and Maureen Russo on September twenty-fifth, Carly Sankey on September twenty-second, SEAL Committee Officers on September twenty-eighth, Julie Searls on September twenty-first, Robert and Carrie Anne St. Ammon, September twenty-first, Christina Toody on September twenty-third, and Wendy Wang Fitzgerald on September twenty-third.
Thank you. The next order is the possible approval of the minutes from our last meeting from September twenty-second. If anybody would like to make the motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the September twenty-second, 2020 school committee meeting as presented.
Motion is our second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, this has to be a roll call vote. Brownwood?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie? Nicole?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Next up, we have visitor comments. Anyone interested in speaking during the visitor comments, please make yourself known so that I can call on you.
Hi. Yeah. Diane, actually.
Oh, sorry. Leaving your screen. I'm sorry. Please state your name and address, and then you can speak.
Sure. My name is Diane Porfilio. I live at eighty Treasure Drive, and I am the president to SEAL, the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow, and I just have a statement I'd like to read. Okay. Dear Superintendent O'Shea and school committee members, we appreciate all the time and effort that you've served our community over the recent months during the unprecedented times. You have gone above and beyond and have invested additional hours and time to meet and discuss everyone's concerns. We believe you have the well-being of our time, town, and our children at the forefront of your mission. The pandemic has forced us all to make adjustments and alter the way our children attend and learn in the classroom. We recognize the hardships and best efforts of the entire administration, the teachers, and the staff these last few weeks of schools reopening. Since our children left school on March twenty twenty, we continue to, their learning at home, and many lessons have been learned during that period that has carried over into this new academic school year. Our hope is to share our discoveries and insights in order to provide you with as much information as possible, information that might prove to be helpful as you move forward in your planning. The majority of our special education children have experienced more and more difficulty with services and evaluations. Unfortunately, they have regressed both socially and academically. Parents and caretakers have taken on the role of special education teachers, therapists, and counselors. The toll this has placed on households has led to the detriment of the parent and child relationship, the health of our family unit, and the financial strain on families. While these are trying times for everyone in our community, we appreciate the opportunity to voice our genuine concerns on behalf of SEAL. Over the past few weeks, many parents have shared their concerns about their child's struggle with proposed hybrid remote learning. These are students who normally receive assistance from a paraprofessional or aide. We do recognize that fragile learners with intensive needs are attending school in person five days a week, and this is greatly appreciated. The children participating in the hybrid two days per week plan have services condensed to just those two days with little to no necessary supported aid on the remaining three days as outlined on their IEP. While these parents are doing the best they can, unfortunately, they are not professional special education teachers, therapists, or counselors. We fear such circumstances could interfere with and undermine the incredible work being done during those two days of school. Jean Fontaine has presented her current circumstances to you, which many families in our community relate to. We respectfully ask you to take Jean's recommendations into consideration as our kids are faltering and parents are calling out for help. We recognize the efforts you've made to uphold the high standards of education for which the Long Meadow School District is known for. This includes the high quality of paraprofessional and aides working for the school system. In the past, you've taken the time to properly screen and hire the right professional for the job. With the recent influx of paraprofessional job postings, we are grateful for your continued efforts to bring on the best candidates to work with our children. Given the provided information, we ask that you reconsider giving parents the choice of having children with an IEP in place return to school five days a week to receive the equitable access to all legally provided services that are outlined under individual education plans. We recognize this may add increased strain. However, these are uncertain times for everyone as no one could have predicted. Thank you for your time, consideration, and addressing these urgent matters. We are grateful for the opportunity to present to you our heartfelt concerns, SEAL Committee Officers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other guests interested in speaking tonight? Okay, I don't see anyone else. Clicking through one more time. Okay. Next up is school committee announcements and recognitions. Anyone from the committee? Gianna, go ahead.
Apologies. Just want to congratulate the cross-country and the soccer teams for their amazing starts.
Thank you, Gianna. Anyone else? Kevin?
Yeah, I just want to say, similar to what I said last time, just a huge thank you to all the teaching team in our schools. We now have kids in all of our schools. Our teachers are doing just amazing work, and I just want to thank them.
Anyone else? I'd like to take the opportunity to echo both of those. I did watch boy soccer TV the other night. It looks a little different from soccer, but good job by the boys winning a game, and I think all the athletes who are dealing with a trying time right now with the new rules. Great job by them and the coaches. And just to make note of the fact that all the emails we get, which are very many, particularly in the past week or two, note their appreciation for the administration and the teachers and all the hard work they're doing. So we appreciate that as well, and it's always important to note it. Next up, we have business with guests, which is the presentation of the model update. Marty?
Thank you. So I'm pleased to have with us this evening our three elementary principals. Ms. Donna Hutton from Center School, Stacey Bosian from Blueberry, Amy Steck, excuse me, from Blueberry Hill Elementary School, and Ms. Marie Pratt from Wolf Swamp Elementary School. So we have, as the committees were and the communities were, been involved in sort of the ongoing assessment of our hybrid model and the instructional plans that we have to serve our students. And we have, from the beginning, been committed to assessing those plans to ensure that they're meeting the needs of our students, both academically and socially emotionally. And so this week, we had sent off to our K-five community, parents and caregivers, a, a plan for revising and enhancing the, the model that is currently in place. And so I want to acknowledge upfront that, you know, this was a, a good faith effort by our administrative team to put together a plan that we felt was really in the best interest of the students of this community, but also acknowledge that we had offered the community a chance to provide us with some initial feedbacks and preliminary feedback on the plan, and, and we learned that the plan as presented would certainly, in the eyes of many, present some challenges in terms of family schedules that have been recently rearranged in, in the light of, in light of the, the model that we have in place. And so I think all of us share a, a commitment to be responsive to our families and to bring forward plans that are reflective of the needs of all of our stakeholders. And so I wanted to acknowledge that upfront. I shared with the committee the results of the, the survey that we had administered, and I appreciate all the community members who took time to fill that in and give us some, some feedback that will no doubt shape our work going forward. And you can see that in terms of the, there were, there was in terms of the manageability of it for families, in terms of the, the way they viewed the, the efficacy of this, both socially, emotionally, and academically, was, was, was maybe not convincing for some family members and for some parents and caregivers. So tonight, though, I thought it would be important for the, us to assemble to hear the plan more fully, to give the elementary principals an opportunity to provide additional detail, perhaps answer some of the many questions that have come in over the last few days, and, and really give us a thoughtful snapshot of how they think we can enhance and improve the experience for our learners. And so I'll, I'll turn it over to them, and, and they have a slide deck that we would like to go through with you. Following this, we have a couple of guests. In addition to the principals, we have COVID compliance officer Andy Frazier is with us, and Dr. Sally Ginsburg. Dr. Ginsburg is a consulting physician to the district, and we had an opportunity to review the revised model, the enhanced model, with her earlier this week, and Dr. Judy Tapper. And so Mr. Frazier and Dr. Ginsburg are available to the committee if you have any questions relating to the overall self-safety and health components of the plan. So with that, I will turn it over to our esteemed elementary principals, and I will pull up the the slide deck that they have prepared, and I will advance it.
Marty, Kevin has a question.
Sure, yeah.
Marty, I think I know the answer to this, but can you just clarify what the scale is?
Oh, the scale you're looking at represents strongly agree, and five represents strongly disagree. One moment. All right. I think we are good to go, and I'm sure who's going to kick it on for us.
Can you just give me a second? I'm sorry, I can't get my notes to show.
We're gonna have that problem.
Are you having that too?
Yeah.
Diane, can you make sure that the principals, hold on, let her get her headphone on. You can hear me? Can the principal hear your screen?
That'd be great.
Got it. Thank you.
You got your sound?
I got it. Did you get it? Let me wait for you.
Yep.
Okay. Marty, you can move to slide two.
Thank you. I'm good.
Okay. So, good evening. Thank you to Superintendent O'Shea, school committee members, our families, and our Blueberry Hill, Wolf Swamp, and Center School teachers and staffs for tuning in. We hope we'll represent all of you well this evening. I want to begin by sharing some thoughts from the three of us, Principal Steck, Principal Pratt, and me. The hybrid model we're experiencing together, this extraordinary endeavor with this educational structure is uncharted territory. We had nothing to inform us when we began this journey, which is why we think it's important for all of us to pause and reflect upon this fact, uncharted territory. This reality helps us to be gentler with ourselves when each day sometimes feels like we're fledgling teachers, or fledgling administrators, or times when parents and caretakers feel like they're balancing countless new roles for their child's well-being. This is really complex work, and we're looking through historical times. Because there was nothing to inform any of us when we began, we couldn't possibly conceive of what this would be like back in June. As we share the plan tonight, let's be mindful that in the midst of a life-altering pandemic comes growing pains that can leave us feeling disoriented and anxious, and these are the times, like in this moment, when we need each other the most. We need everyone's positive solution-building ideas. So acknowledging all this, we express how deeply we appreciate the tireless work that's being accomplished, the efforts expended each day, the successes, the burdens, the sacrifices, the worries, the frustrations, the humor, the uncertainties that leave us reeling, and the joy we always find with our students. They keep us grounded, and they help us power through each day. And we emphasize that it's important for us that our families understand that with the plan we present, we strive to be mindful that each one of us is living our own challenges during this pandemic, and we hear you. And when like, and like each one of you, we continue to hope for the day when we don't have to be sitting here and talking about how best to educate a whole generation of children with so many unprecedented challenges and constraints before us. We developed this new plan because, as educators, we know when our practices feel ineffective and even unsustainable, it's critical to pivot. It's critical to keep the kids front and center. No one is afraid of the hard work and the complex work the hybrid model demands, and trust me, this is really hard work for all of us. But when, at the end of the day, the results for children after all our efforts and all our time-intensive work feels inadequate, it's time to reconsider what we're doing. Next slide, please. To our school committee, we know you tasked us with developing a plan to bring back our students in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, and we openly and respectfully acknowledge that we will present something very different than what we were asked. We come to you this evening with a plan that was developed considering each aspect of the reality of school for our children and for our teachers and for our families. We've listened and observed this reality. We're also acknowledging that there are nuances to the plan that still need to evolve. Our goal now and always is to provide the most optimal learning experience we can provide for our students bound by the constraints of our present circumstances, and we believe this plan addresses this most important goal. Next slide, please. So here's what was at the forefront of our process and our thinking when we developed the plan. First and always was a focus on students and optimal learning experience. We know we need to adhere to all current safety guidelines. We really want to maintain small class sizes and small cohorts. We want to maximize in-person teaching with a focus on literacy, mathematics, and the social-emotional learning of our students. We certainly want to work within the boundaries of our building footprints, the staffing, and the budget. And we need to build solutions to the challenges of synchronous teaching and learning at the elementary level. I don't know whether I can tell the story adequately enough of what synchronous teaching and learning looks like for our community, but I want to begin by saying the technology is amazing. I think all of us need to acknowledge that. Nick George and his team are exceptional with getting things into place and problem-solving with our teachers. So I want to begin, and we want to begin by saying kudos to him and his team. We couldn't have a better team at hand. What synchronous teaching looks like, what it demands from children, from teachers, we believe is just not sustainable. As one teacher described to us, it's like being two different selves, two different teachers at once, sometimes three. Greeting kids while zooming and Google meeting children in, getting cameras on and volumes adjusted, then muted, problem-solving the technology when, when things arise, all while trying to be the very best teacher you can be. You have the students in front of you, a small group of students, which is wonderful because that's optimal learning. The smaller the group, the more you can attend to their needs. Then you have the students at home as well. Please know that we can't express strongly enough that teachers, more than anything else, want to ensure that kids are learning and they're growing, and that they receive the attention they need. But the necessity, the demand to split themselves and try to attend to the needs of each child in two different places, the model is fraught with challenges, not only for teachers but for children, especially our youngest learners. If teachers believed they were reaching kids and believed that kids were receiving the optimal teaching and learning possible, we would not be compelled to shift our model at this time. We're going to talk, also, I'm going to let Principal Stack talk a little bit about the pragmatic approach that we considered with our model.
So the pragmatic approach, you'll, you'll notice number seven, being mindful of the reality in our classrooms. So thank you, Donna, for getting us started so well. And I'm really grateful to have these two women next to me, working really hard for our kids and our teachers and the community. So it's great to be part of this team. So what does school look like right now for our children, those day-to-day challenges within our current model? So we are all in our lives at home, in our lives professionally, and in our lives for our children at school. We're adhering to safety procedures and protocols. So in doing this, we are, there's some increased time that has been taken away from learning for multiple hand-washing times throughout the day. There's time taken away from learning because we need to line up in a different way, and we need to maintain social distancing throughout our days. We're troubleshooting technology issues, both for the learners at home and the learners in school. Increased time is taken away from learning for mask and snack breaks. Sometimes these snack breaks are within the classroom, twelve feet apart. Most of the times, these snack breaks are outside. Students are practicing so much patience during all of these moments for multiple cohorts of children. One of our teachers described our children as heroic. The tears from our children because they can't be heard, they cannot be seen, they cannot ultimately engage in ways that meet their needs within this model. Less transitions may actually translate into, we believe, more time on learning for everyone. Ultimately, the fragmented learning that is our current experience for our students does feel inadequate for our children, hence our recommendation to pivot. We're still committed, however, to students' learning throughout evidence, evidence and research-based practices in our curriculum. Elementary school is the foundational time to lay the groundwork for growing literate, engaged, and critical-thinking children. Maintaining the workshop model and reading, writing, and math is important to this administrative team and to our staff. All children need differentiation and meaningful instruction that adheres to our curriculum framework, instruction that can meet the needs of all of our learners, whether in person or learning remotely. So we will, next slide, please. Thanks, so.
So we wanted to take a few minutes to talk to you about our thought processes and how we came to develop this plan. So the day after your September twenty-second meeting, we sent an email to our grade-level teams. And I just want to remind you, this year when we talk about grade-level teams, we are talking about the blue bubble team. So that includes the classroom teacher, specialized teachers, special subject teachers, and our interventionists. I know I immediately probably had a meeting set up within minutes, and that they were, teachers were eager to meet with us. They wanted to share how things were going, the challenges, and, and most importantly, most importantly, they wanted to share their ideas for improvement. At my first meeting, the half-day model was suggested. And I have to say, my first reaction was, that'll be disruptive to families. And I was very hesitant, as I, my other colleagues were, about the half-day. But as we continued to meet with grade levels, the half-day model kept coming up. The more we discussed it and other possible solutions, it gained widespread support. It became, it came closest to fulfilling some of the things that Donna said earlier in the forefront about. keeping class sizes, focus on student learning, building solutions for synchronous teaching and learning, to name a few. And so we came, our thinking evolved. And we came to believe that this was a solid model. And we feel strongly that this would provide a better educational experience for our students. We understand the value of community input, so we appreciate you giving us this opportunity to share and explain our reasoning for this model. Next slide, please.
So our plan before you is a plan, in fact, for K to five. We have a proposed starting date of October 26. That is not set in stone, of course, but just based on our conversations and thinking, that felt like a comfortable start date for us. Next slide. So what will our learning look like at school for students? So the next few slides that we'll show you show a potential daily schedule for each cohort of students in our cohorts A, B, and C. While in school, the focus for all of our children will be on the core subjects, reading, writing, and math. We'll maintain our ongoing commitment to social and emotional learning and well-being and community build, as community building is essential for all of our students every day. Coming to school each day on a half-day basis and cohorts will help our children safely build more consistent learning routines. Children will have carryover and follow-up on the previous day's lessons and learning instead of going five days perhaps without accessing their teacher in person or without interruption. Those students who struggle to navigate socially will be better served, we feel, as they can look forward to their cohort more consistently four to five days each week. There will be more time for children to actively engage in the workshop model, differentiated levels of instruction for emerging and meeting learners, and some small group explicit instruction and meaningful, accurate assessment of our student learning. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what home will look like, and then we can just review the specific slides. What will learning look like at home for students in all cohorts? Each level will have a special subject class each day that may be asynchronous or synchronous. Teachers at each level will plan meaningful learning tasks and activities for students that will enhance and reinforce their previous in-person or remote learning. Teachers will plan for independent learning that's appropriate for each level, therefore it will look different at each level. Purposeful, meaningful, and planned tasks and activities will enhance and support their learning. Students may begin to work more independently, perhaps with a better routine, targeted tasks that relate directly to the previously taught lesson, developing better habits and work habits over time. We can continue to use some platforms such as CSAT and Google Classroom for asynchronous activities and work submission while at home. But these may be adjusted as developmentally appropriate across the grade levels. Science and social studies will be integrated into literacy blocks as well as included into at-home activities and projects for our children. Continued, we will have continued access to programs, to online programs such as Lexia, iXL, and Discovery Ed. Some of these web-based programs can individually target skills at which each student needs reinforcement or extension. Projects can and may be assigned for grade levels that focus on highlighted interests of their students. We're considering these opportunities to connect synchronously as applicable in small groups with support staff based on the needs of the students. So if we go back and look at the slides, for Cohort A, you'll notice in-person beginning at 8:15 and through 11 o'clock, readers workshop, math workshop, writers workshop, an ongoing focus on social-emotional learning. The afternoon, I described for you what those opportunities and activities will look like. The next slide shows what it would look like for Cohort B. It's also important to note that every other Wednesday, we will rotate the Cohort A and Cohort B as well. Cohort A will always come to school in the morning. Cohort B will always come to school in the afternoon on those alternating Wednesdays. We go to the next slide. Looking at Cohort C. So for Cohort C, all of our children, no matter the cohort, are essential to our learning families. Cohort C children will have a change in staffing, and we acknowledge the emotional impact that this may initially have on these children and their families. We believe that assigning a dedicated Long Meadow teacher to these children at each grade level and for most grades across schools will also help these students have a more consistent, less interrupted, and more rich learning experience, just like their peers in the other two cohorts. The other two cohorts have a dedicated teacher. We believe so should Cohort C. Staff will work with the children and families to develop and sustain healthy and safe classroom communities while maintaining social connections to the children's homeschool. We strive to schedule special subjects with their homeschool in order to maintain relationships with their original and homeschool grade-level classmates and specials teachers. Again, we feel the need to pivot for all of our children because our current plan and model, we feel, simply is inadequate for our children. We believe we can do better, so we would like to do better. So if we go back into the slide deck, just again, looking at Cohort C, whoops, hop back up there, thanks. Cohort C teacher at each grade level, some grades have two larger cohort sizes. I don't need to read through it, you can see what's there.
So you're probably wondering, why not plan for full capacity of K to two? So when we thought about this, we had some practical considerations that we emphasized. Obviously, the safety guidelines and the impact on time and learning. As was mentioned before, some of the procedures we have put in do take a lot of time, the washing of hands before lunch, even just walking down the hall. If you double the size of those classes, that's just going to take longer to do. Our classrooms are not set up with 18 to 20 students with six feet of spacing. This would need, so our school footprints would have to look at, and we would need to repurpose space. Now, you're probably wondering why, in the summer, that was the plan. But in the summer plan, there would have been a lot of moves of classrooms. And that to do that now would be very disruptive and would take some considerable time to rearrange those classroom spaces. We do have a commitment to smaller class size. We think this is a priority for safety. We also think it allows teachers to maximize teaching time and to provide intensive instruction to the in-person student. We all have had some enrollment changes, so even the numbers that you looked at in August are not the same. We have had some Cohort C students return to either A or B, and we also have had new students. And as the instructional leaders of either pre-K to five or K to five building, we felt it was important to look at the whole and look at a solution for all our students rather than just one small part of that population. The next slide. This is just a picture, so you can understand the spacing. So this is taken from an angle of the last child, the person who's farthest away from the teacher. So you can see how spread out those are, and this is currently. So there isn't a lot of space when we're keeping the six-foot distancing to add more desks. Yep, go ahead, Donna.
I'm going to add something because center school classrooms, we had talked about this before. We actually have a footprint, our classrooms are larger. And when we were first calculating whether we could bring back full capacity K to two, we were using this online calculator, desk calculator, how many desks you could fit into the classroom. And before we had lived the constraints of what we are living under, we thought, yes, you can fit 18, you can fit, but it is literally wall-to-wall from the six feet where the teacher is to the back. And then what that does, yes, you can fit the desk, but the visual view for the students being in the very back row or being really on the outside of the classroom. And our teachers, their teaching is very visual. They're using the whiteboard, they're using, and it's really hard. It would be virtually impossible for all the kids to be able to see what's happening. And also, it takes away the spaces that the teachers have now where the kids can still move. They've got to move. They can't sit in those desks all day. So you put 18 to 20 desks in a room, again, even if you can fit them in there, you take away that space where they can safely have a reading time, you know, distance, where they can have, our kindergarten teachers are rolling out yoga mats, and the kids sit on their little yoga mats with all their individual play activity, their little toys for choice time, talking to each other from their yoga mat. So it would take away all of those opportunities, bringing in full capacity, even if we have the footprint in some of those rooms. So I just wanted to qualify that, that there are much larger classrooms that center that could do it. But just because we can doesn't mean we should.
Thank you very much. Do you have a wrap-up, Marty, or can I move to questions from the committee?
So I want to thank the elementary principals. I want to thank all the community members who provided us some important feedback. I couldn't be prouder of the work that they've done to pull this plan together and to bring you something that we believe is very student-centered, that's very thoughtful, and that really puts student learning at the center of our work as it should be. And, you know, all the while, they're running their buildings on a day-to-day basis, and so it required a considerable amount of work. And it's obviously a very complex and challenging task. And so we're really happy to bring forward this plan to you. As I mentioned at the outset, we have Dr. Sally Ginsburg and Andy Frazier with us. And I thought it might make sense to begin with some of the, kind of look at this through a safety lens, if that's okay. And once we've had an opportunity to have that conversation, perhaps Dr. Ginsburg and Mr. Frazier could be excused from the meeting. But I know they would feel like to stay if their attendance is needed as well. I would say to kick it off that, as noted in one of the earlier slides, this plan retains all of the core health and safety strategies upon which all of our programming is based right now. From the cohorting to the distancing, to the hand hygiene, to the ability to contact trace, et cetera, et cetera, all those core health and safety strategies remain firmly in place. And I know that that's where the elementary principals started. That was one of their working assumptions, that we had to ensure that we were meeting those safety guidelines. So if it makes sense to the committee, that we could start with kind of taking a look at it from a, through the safety lens, and then we can move to some of the instructional components, so.
Sure, that makes sense.
Yeah. So we welcome your questions, your concerns, your input.
Anyone have a question?
I'm sorry, Superintendent, I thought we were going to hear about, from those experts.
Oh, sure, we could turn it over. So I'll formally, once again, introduce Dr. Sally Ginsburg, consulting physician to the district. And I want to thank, once again, Dr. Ginsburg and Dr. Tapper for joining us earlier this week for kind of a review of the cohorting strategy and the overall approach. And Dr. Ginsburg, if you'd like to share some thoughts or introduce yourself, that would be helpful to all of us, I'd say.
Sure, hi, I'm Sally Ginsburg. I am a pediatrician. I have recently just retired from Pioneer Valley Pediatrics.
Unable.
Semi-helping you guys out, I guess. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So Dr. Tapper unfortunately could not join us today. However, I'm really happy to answer your questions. The thing, you know, when we went through this, you know, from an emotional, psychological standpoint, we thought that it really made a lot of sense to have some consistency for kids. And, you know, this was presented to us, we really didn't know why we were coming in per se or what this plan was. But both of us thought that it was a well-thought-out, well-intentioned, and appropriate plan to get kids into a more livable, more normal, I guess, way of doing things. And so, you know, I think from a psychological standpoint, that was one of the big things for us. The other is that you do maintain all of the safety issues by having a small cohort in these two distinct sections. And so we felt that it would give kids time to be with their peers, working with their teachers, it would allow teachers to have a less chaotic workday, and that you weren't really sacrificing any of the, you know, hard-thought-out efforts that you had made to get these schools to be safe for kids. And so far, knock wood, we've been doing okay. I think that regardless, probably are going to have some issues down the line. If not, congratulations then, you've done a really great job of something that they can only seem to do in New Zealand and Australia. But I think that the plan as it stands right now and as it was presented really seems to be a plus for everyone except perhaps parents who have already planned otherwise. And I don't know if that is part of what Marty was talking about earlier. But I don't know if you want to, Mr. Frazier, if you want to talk about that a little bit more, about safety issues and the compliance stuff?
Sure. So when I attended the admin meeting last week that you were at, the two points that I had made were, number one, going back to when the committee was meeting in the summer to discuss what mode they wanted to reopen in. The positivity rate, the positivity test rate was about .87. And last week, when we met, it was down to .47. And yesterday, they do a weekly update, on Wednesday, the state does, it was at .52. So my reason for bringing that up is, all of those are very good numbers, number one. Second point that I made to the group was that, and everybody has seen this in the news, the pendulum seems to be swinging back the other way. The governor has relaxed some of the restrictions. Some of the gathering numbers have been pushed up. They've increased the number of people that are allowed per table in restaurants from six to 10. Notice probably that, excuse me, the self-serve beverage stations in various places have come back, so things like that. So from a safety standpoint, Long Meadow was doing very, very well. And I think the reason that that is the case is because everybody is doing what they need to do with this pandemic. Everybody's working hard, everybody's cooperating, and those numbers reflect that good effort.
If people, I just want to say, if people have specific questions about any of this, please let me know. I'm happy to stay for as long as you need. I have nothing better to do anyway.
Likewise.
So I'll just, just to echo what Mr. Frazier said, I just wanted to share with you. I had given the committee a copy of the MassDPH numbers that just came out. And they continue to be encouraging. You'll see that certainly there are more communities that have moved into the red. You'll see that certainly there are more communities that have moved into the red. But the positivity rate, as Andy said, point five two in Long Meadow, and we remain a gray community on the state's colorful metric. Certainly, there appear to be more communities that are going yellow or red. But again, Long Meadow appears to be having a different experience right now. So I think, considering the plan in light of the wider context and in light of the MassDPH dashboard that is available to everybody, is an important one. I would say with this plan, maybe our principals could, or Mr. Frazier, or Mr. Mazza's been involved in this as well, could talk a little bit about, this is a different approach in that we have a morning cohort and an afternoon cohort. And so there's some important safety considerations that we need to think about because of that. And again, it remains, it maintains our commitment to the cohorting model. And at any one moment, our buildings are de-densified and we are in ability, you know, in a position to isolate and contact trace as necessary. So that's a key health and safety strategy that remains in place. Perhaps one of the principals could talk a little bit about the desk arrangement that we had in mind for this model?
Did you put that picture on my deck?
No, I didn't. I can get it ready, though. So we have some pretty creative teachers who, even a few weeks ago, were talking about the possibility of this, you know, leading in this direction. We're heading in this direction perhaps. And allowing children within the classroom, the desks being set up just right next to each other. So Cohort A students will sit at one desk and they'll have their own surface. And then the deep, sorry, the cleaning will occur after, you know, in between when A leaves and B comes in. And then B comes in and sits at a desk right next to where A sat. Still, yes, it's close proximity, but one of the points the doctors made earlier in meeting with Dr. O'Shea and Mr. Mazza was that, you know, that was sufficient enough and good practice for hygiene for the kids and for maintaining some of that safety, our adherence to those safety protocols, having the two desks side by side for kids in Cohort A and Cohort B. So I think that answers most of the questions.
I would just add that the cleaning procedures would be similar to what's happening at the preschool, which has an AM/PM program. So you would count on the maintenance to, I don't know, Marie, if you wanted to talk a little bit more about that?
So currently, pre-K does have an AM and a PM. And we have a floater who comes in at the time that the AM is dismissed and cleans those rooms. I think what's important to understand is with this model, we don't have lunch because that, and so that we also would then have the custodian, who would be also available to go into those rooms and do some cleaning. So it's worked well with the pre-K, and so we would follow that same model. I would just echo, there's some of the upper-grade classes already have two desks in their rooms, and the kids just sit at whatever desks there are, so that they have their own desk.
Dr. Ginsburg, I know that was a topic of conversation. And Andy, that was a topic of conversation when we met. I don't know if there's anything you want to add in terms of the desk arrangement that we had described and discussed?
I think that the one thing that we had discussed, and I think Judy brought it up, was the fact that kids could actually have all their own things maintained at a particular desk, and things wouldn't have to be shifted around. So everything would be clean, but it would be their own germs that they were carrying around with them and they'd be sitting with. And since the desks would be cleaned in between, anyway, you know, if their stuff is there, they're gonna stick with their stuff. And that's probably the safest way to go. And actually, it may be very beneficial to not have lunch. I mean, it wasn't something that I really thought about at the time that we met. But in fact, the lack of lunch for kids may decrease any kind of transmission of disease that might have occurred otherwise when you have them there all day.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would certainly echo that, having the kids use the same desk every day. That's a significant step towards keeping everybody safe.
Thank you all. Now I'll take some questions. Kevin?
Yeah, thank you. I have a lot of questions. I'll try and just focus on safety right now. I guess a couple, so I'll just give you two. So number one, looking at the chart that Marty just gave us about where the COVID rates are going up, I would love some comment on what's happening in those communities, why are they going up? Just so we can reinforce what we need to keep doing. So that's question number one, what's going on in those communities? What do we need to do, continue to do to keep ourselves safe? Thank you, Marty. And then the second one, you know, we've gotten a lot of comments from parents about, right now, we say we need a full day to do deep cleaning. And now we're proposing we reduce that to an hour or so. I think we need to explain to the community the differences and why it's now okay to do it in an hour, what we said takes a full day to do right now. So I'll stop with those two questions.
I'll start, and Mr. Mazza, if any of the principals want to also share. I think our experience with the preschool has been informative and our ability to clean between the AM and the PM preschool day and get all the surfaces wiped, I think, was critical. And I think the fact that, at the elementary level, unlike middle school and high school, students are essentially in a single classroom all day. And so our ability to sort of limit the exchange within the cohort is greater. Our ability to contact trace within the cohort is greater. So there's a lot of safety and mitigation strategies that work really well at the elementary level because of the small cohorts and the small class size that this plan would allow for. So the deep cleaning that really refers to the electrostatic cleaning that occurs on Wednesday. And I think when we were exploring this in August, we wondered about how long that would take and the conditions where we would need it. Our custodians have gotten very adept at using it, and the length of time needed for the electrostatic cleaning isn't quite what we thought it was. So that's been important. But I think it's really that we're able to get into those elementary rooms and do the surface cleaning, the wiping, that would, you know, because the students are essentially at one desk and they're not moving about the building. So I think it's that, and I think it's our experience with the preschool that has convinced us that the cleaning that we have in mind for this model would be sufficient. And it's something that we reviewed at length with Dr. Ginsburg and Mr. Frazier as well. I don't know if there's anything that we're missing on that from our principals or Mr. Mazza.
If you want me to.
I just, the other thing that has come up in our reading and our conversations with medical professionals has also been the use of the masks, not the gators, but the masks for children and for staff, pretty much all day. And that has helped us to, again, the medical professionals can answer this certainly better than I can, but that's something that we feel really comfortable with, has become more of a routine. It's amazing to see our youngest students bebopping around with their masks on and really unfazed by it. So kudos to the families for doing all the mask training, because we're really, our kids are wearing masks, and that's been really great. So that's just my opinion, and I don't know if that's worth sharing here, but I'm gonna share it anyway.
I think kids are very resilient, and they're also very busy thinking and doing other things. And so the mask doesn't make, it doesn't really worry them. You know, they're not constantly worrying about what they look like. They're just doing their thing. And so it just becomes a part of them, and the younger they are, it seems the easier it is for them to manage it. And I see it with my own grandchildren. I did want to address the issue about why these other communities are having the issues that they're having. And I think that the Springfield and Hollyoake probably comes down to cold weather and multifamily living, in large part. That's probably a big part of it, living in places closer to other families, more large nuclear families, probably a big part of it. Amherst, obviously, is probably the students at school, who are also living in dormitory settings. The other communities, it probably varies, not quite as much as it may look like it does. And it just, you know, Chickpea probably also has a considerable amount of multifamily housing. Long Meadow is very fortunate that way. You may prove to do quite well, like rural areas, until there's some kind of, hopefully doesn't happen, cluster situation where you have a breakout in one area. But I think that that pretty much explains it. And so, you know, I, I couldn't, I can't explain Munson, to be honest with you, or Palmer. But maybe it's just people's thinking in different areas. But I don't think that you're at risk of that until people get less mindful of what they're doing and more weary of doing what they have been doing.
Thank you.
If I could add on to that, one of the, I think probably shortcomings of the reporting system is that it does not show difference between cases in a nursing home or an assisted living facility versus the general population. So for example, I'm gonna make up some numbers here. If there was, if Long Meadow had twelve cases, and ten of them were in a nursing home, and two of them were in the general population, you wouldn't see that. All you would see would be twelve.
Thank you.
Yes, it's my understanding that the electrostatic cleaning also addresses any air particles. Is that correct? I could be totally wrong on that.
More surface, Mr. Mazza.
Is it more surface?
It's more spray that's going on to the surfaces.
Okay.
It's actually directed towards their.
Towards the surface. Okay, okay, thank you. No, I just think that's important to clarify, especially for somebody like me who didn't know. But also, just to follow up on that. So if the students are in classes for two hours, or two and a half hours, what's the, how does the need for mask breaks then, you know? How does that work with the two and a half hours? Because I think that's an important factor. If we're now eliminating, you know, masks off at lunch, that's good, right? But where, what do we anticipate in terms of mask breaks during that two-and-a-half-hour period?
I think mask breaks looks different at each level and in each classroom. The teachers have become, I think if you asked each teacher, they would address that differently. And it would depend on the particular day and on their students and what the needs of the students might be. There's certainly still going to be a mask break. I'm certain of that. But again, I think it's gonna look different, you know, depending on what the needs are of a class on any particular day. Because we see them doing it in lots of different ways. You know, sometimes at recess, when the children, they're still wearing their masks at recess, we have students that will come to us and say, can I go over there and take a mask break? They've gotten really good about it. They come because they're running and they're active, and they just go and they find a private space and they take their masks off and they take their break, you know, during that time. So I know that's not a real clean answer, but I really do defer to the teachers for that response.
I think too, like, they build their reading stamina or their, you know, they will build stamina for that two-and-a-half amount of time. I think that that would be feasible, maybe easier for the older kids. But then, hopefully, the younger kids will maybe need one mask break during that time. But again, I agree with Gianna. I think the teachers will be great at deciding what works for kids, maybe even on an individual basis instead of a whole-class mask break.
Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Ryan. I just had two follow-ups. One being, I know Principal Steck, you mentioned, you know, the time taken away from learning with bathroom breaks and mask breaks and hand washing. So just to kind of follow up on what Suzie was saying, you're still gonna have to do the hand washing in the bathroom breaks. It's just in a more condensed time now. So I feel like you're still gonna be taking that time away, but now it's less time for the actual teaching. So I just wanted some clarification on that.
Those protocols will still be in place. Gianna, is that what you're asking? Is that what you're saying?
No, sorry. I'm not being clear. I think, so, go ahead.
Sorry, I think so, when we were talking about that, when you have twice as many kids, it's going to take us longer to do that. So what we were talking about, when, if at full capacity, hand washing takes a long time now. But then if you have double your class, how long that's gonna take? So I think that's when we were talking a little bit about some of those routines that if we were to go back to full capacity, those would take away some time on learning.
Okay, because I was thinking it probably, I work in an elementary school, so I was thinking it probably still takes quite a while.
Although I would say the kids are getting better, the more they do it. But yes, it does, the younger kids take a little bit longer actually than the older kids.
In a short amount of time, too, I don't envision them needing as many snack breaks or as many movement breaks, going to lunch. Or, you know, heading to lunch, coming back in from recess, another recess, coming back in. So I think, you know, some of those, some of those times that we have now, even for the full day, for kids who are with us the full day, that will, those times will back off, I think, or will calm down, subside.
Thank you. And then I just had a follow-up about the surface cleaning. Again, I do work in an elementary school, and we do have preschool, two preschool classrooms. And we have a small population, three hundred students. But we still have about sixteen other classrooms. And then, you know, you have the pull-out classrooms and the OT and the PT, you know, the other special services settings. So, and we have one custodian. So who is, like, I get that the preschool cleaning is working, but now you're gonna have all these other services and all these other classrooms. So how is that gonna get done in that amount of time?
So we'll have a lot of custodial time, we'll be freed up, given that the custodians won't be preparing for lunch or working through the lunch block. And then I think we do need to engage our custodial staff in really understanding how much time will be required. And let's see, Mr. Mazza, with some ideas as well?
I think we're gonna consider engaging our lunch monitor, since now there won't be a lunch service. The elementary schools use them to monitor the students when they're in the cafeteria having lunch to maybe enable, in order to keep them employed and actively working, maybe try to shift that time to assisting in getting into the rooms. We do have floaters that have been working more of a midday shift, knowing that the cafeteria needs attention, but also the preschool needed this time. So we would still also have that time when they're not in the caf anymore to also assist with the floaters to get into the classrooms to wipe down the desks.
Thank you.
Suzie, you got another question?
Yeah, just going back to the mask breaks. And I think it's just in. And, and I think it's just important because right now we don't, going to the original question and a lot of the questions that we've received from, from the parents in the community. We, we, we are doing mask breaks right now, knowing that there's only one cohort in, in the room, so to speak. So again, we know that this disease is airborne. We know that anyone can be asymptomatic with it. And so a mask break, you know, in the morning could lead to particles in the air that, you know, are, I, I just, I have to bring it up because I think it's, it's something that, you know, we have to consider is, is part of this, the insidiousness of this disease. So I just think it's important to address that. And, and that, so it sounds to me like what you were saying before, maybe I'm making an assumption based on what you said, but mask breaks are typically done outside. Okay. But if, if, but they're done sometimes because students are eating snack outside or in the classroom? Mainly outside, but sometimes in, based on weather and things like that. That's all I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Marty.
I think the, the airborne nature of this is, is become clearer to all of us. And we've talked at earlier meetings about the ventilation checks that we've done and the ventilation improvements that we've, that we've done. And so Nick Durgantis, our facilities director, is not here with us tonight, but he's, he's gone through and tested on a room by room basis, the air exchange that happens in the course of an hour. And so again, Mr. Maso might be able to speak more specifically to this, but I think that's an important, another important health and safety strategy. And then as weather permits, our teachers will continue to work with the windows open. And so hopefully we get a, a pleasant fall that allows for that. But I think what I've learned through this is that there's really no single, you know, safety strategy. It's, it's really a suite of strategies that we have to be attentive to. Everything from masking to distancing to hand hygiene, to the ventilation, to staff self-certification, surface wiping. All of these things work together to keep our kids safe. And, um, you know, I, I, I want to go back to what Amy said earlier. I've been so impressed with how kids have responded to the safety requirements throughout the course of the school day. Uh, I think we all thought back in August that masks were going to be problematic for our kids. And that has turned out not to be the case. And I'd also remind everyone that unlike other districts, we have a pre-K to 12 mask policy. DESI guidance only requires it in grades two through 12. So we've taken a more sort of conservative stance on, on the masks just to, again, to beef up the, that suite of health and safety strategies that, that we have in place across the board. So I don't know if I missed anything with regard to the ventilation or the airborne question that, that Suzie brings up. And Dr. Ginsberg or Andy or Tom, if you have anything else to add, feel free.
I see Brown, can you just say something? It's on topic. I'll call on you. The current model is safe, correct? It's been safe the way we thought it the last couple of weeks. So this, we're not advertising this because it's safer, right? It can't possibly be safer because there's two different groups coming in the same day. And one group gets a night cleaning before they show up and one group gets one hour cleaning before they show up.
Yeah, I, I think it's, when, when I look at this plan against all the safety strategies that are required of us, I feel like it, it maintains our commitment across the board. It's, it's a, it's a different strategy that, that kind of mirrors how we're approaching the preschool currently. But all in all, I think it, it, I went back earlier this week to the presentation that we did for you on July 28th. And I was sort of checking this approach against the safety guidelines that we had discussed back in the summer. And it, and it felt good that we were still remaining, we were still adhering to all those, those principles.
Thank you. A lot of the emails that we received from parents, they were inquiring about the social emotional aspect of the plan. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about, I guess, the social emotional advantages and disadvantages of this new plan versus the current plan?
Is that something you want me to answer?
We could start with you, Dr. Ginsberg. Feel, feel free and then I think we should.
That as well.
Hi, Marie. I haven't seen her in forever. Known Marie for a long time. What, what I would like to say about that is that consistency is a big part of school. And I think that children in my personal life, as well as my patients, have really suffered for lack of consistency and lack of peer engagement. And the abruptness of change, I mean, you go Monday, Tuesday, and then you're off Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Getting back into the swing of things, I think it takes an emotional hit, a academic hit. I, I think that being engaged with kids is what kids need. I have seen children in, in my practice, as, as well again as in my life, who have bounced back from, I, I would say, some form of mild depression for a lack of having been engaging with other children. And, you know, when kids go every day, that's a consistency that they're not getting right now. So Dr. Tapper and I both felt similarly about this. I mean, she, she, she actually wanted everybody to go all the time, I think. But I think she's a little more cavalier than I am about this kind of stuff. But I think that it's really important and I think you're really doing the kids a favor. I can't speak to what you're going to be dealing with, with parents in terms of the putting together puzzles, puzzle pieces in their lives to try and figure out how to live their lives in a manner that's conducive with modern life and then having to switch back midstream. But I have a feeling that once engaged in this more consistent level academic environment, things probably, they'll probably be happier. I know the kids will be. I cannot imagine that children will not benefit from what you are going to compared to what you have right now.
Thank you. Just to add to that, I think it's important to remember that social emotional learning isn't separate from what happens throughout the day and in our classrooms. It's integrated into everything the teachers do with the kids. Even the workshop model itself is a social event. There are stretches of times when kids are interacting with each other and talking with each other and navigating all the things that children have to navigate in their social worlds. And I do believe, I'm, I'm going to speak for the teachers now, I, I do believe morning meeting would, would still be a part of their day. It's an important part of setting the stage for what's going to happen in the morning or in the afternoon. But again, it's integrated into all the work they do throughout the day. It's not an add-on or a separate class. And I think that's true of all our elementary schools with whatever social emotional curriculum that, that we have in place.
I think another big struggle for our kids emotionally has been not being able to connect. And by that, I mean not just connect emotionally with their teachers and with their friends, but connect through technology. The taglines that come in about, you know, my child's in tears because they can't get this to work or that to work. And so taking that portion off of the table for them and having them more consistently in school, we feel is going to really support them the best, the best that we can right now under the circumstances.
Can I ask you to, you hit on something, Amy, that I feel like is important in terms of the, the social emotional issue that Brown went asked about. And that is the, um, how this plan will affect screen time and, and perhaps create a, a better balance, which, boy, we know, we've learned in recent years that there's a strong connection between a child's social emotional health and the amount of time that they're spending in front of a screen. So is that something that one of you guys could talk about? How, how this might achieve a better balance for children with regard to the amount of time that they're on, on a screen?
So in, in this model, it really reduces the, you know, right now you have two full days that the students are on, have screen time anytime from 8:30 to the end of school. So if they're coming every day, we know at least a half of that day, they will be in person. And even when we, we were thinking about some of the, the half part of the day that they're not in school, we were conscious of, of also not, some of it would be independent work that their teacher might have assigned to them the day before or that morning so that they have practice. So, so even some of what we're planning for, for the time they're not in school is not necessarily screen time. Will there be some? Yes, but we, we do think it will significantly be reduced.
Nicole?
I'm wondering if while we're on the topic of social emotional learning, if we can bring cohort C into the conversation for a little bit. I'm wondering if you guys can speak a little bit more about how you see those connections to students' homeschools remaining intact, especially because some of our students have been in their schools for several years at this point and are now looking at maybe being taken from a classroom and a group of students that they are already familiar with and shifted to another model with another teacher and another. And I understand these are great teachers and good kids and that's all good. I'm just thinking of the social emotional cost of that upheaval, especially for students who've been with the same kids for so many years growing up and are now maybe going to be shifted out. And also if we could speak to kind of what that fluidity could look like for parents if they chose at some point that they see numbers rising and might want to shift into cohort C? Or conversely, if they decided to move from cohort C back to A or B?
That's a great question, Nicole. Thank you. And that's something that we are still, we're still grappling with that as well. Because it, we, we want to ensure if, if we can that, that there will be those times for kids to connect with what is right now their typical day. And some, some families are quite happy with the model that we have right now, the way that they've chosen either cohort A, B, or C. And so we realize that we're going to disrupt that. So yeah, that's a big, that's a big deal. And we're not, we're not trying to minimize that. So those teachers will plan, their Long Meadows teachers, right? Long Meadow Public Schools teachers that will plan with us on those Wednesday afternoons or mornings, depending on, on what that, what the schedule is like. And, and I think we have to look for ways to engage cohort C. We may not know all of those ways right now, but certainly, you know, we've talked about school-wide celebrations that we might be able to, to do with everybody. Spirit weeks, spirit days, you know, just, just smaller things. I know that that probably doesn't make the cohort C families feel good right now in this moment because it's so new and it is a big change for their kids. Having specials with their, so you know, my son, if he's in fourth grade and he's cohort C, he'll still go to center school, fourth grade with his class, his original class. We're going to, we're going to work really hard to, to schedule that for those kids. And I think, you know, as teachers are meeting together, they tend to have a checklist of things that they go through. I think one of them will be, you know, checking in on the cohort C students. Are we aligned, are curriculum expectations at each grade level? We have a scope and sequence at each grade level and each content area that we're all committed to. And we'll need to stay, not lockstep, because I think there are some, just some nice things that teachers like to do. But I have a lot of confidence that, that those kids will be very well taken care of. The transitions will be difficult. We're engaging our school adjustment counselors and, and helping the teachers to help the, the kids and the families. You know, I think we'll do some back-to-school things, you know, some open houses, you know, those kinds of activities to, to engage everyone and to make them feel safe and welcomed and, and adjusting during this really, this really tremendous time. So I don't know if that helps answer some, some of your questions.
Does. So would, are you thinking then that specials, maybe especially we're talking more about it, that older grades might be more synchronous in the afternoons or mornings, depending on your student's time slot? So that would enable that connection to home and school, to your home school again?
Yeah, it certainly could. And I think we would want to balance some of that asynchronous with the synchronous, you know, really trying to make sure that we're, we're looking to balance the screen time and the not-screen time, if you will. So yeah, yep.
Other part of the question might be better suited to, about that fluidity, what, what the plans might be for that. Because before we had this sort of ease of movement between A and B and C. So what might that look like moving forward if we went with this model?
I'd mentioned before, I want to just go back to your first question too, and then I'll, I'll get to the fluidity question. I think I, I would be interested in learning more about the potential benefits to the students in cohort C in the sense that they would have their own teacher. It would be, I think, a more consistent, regular experience. To go back to what Dr. Ginsberg said earlier, I think kids would, would benefit from having that dedicated teacher whose attention is completely devoted to the students in cohort C. It is early in the year, you know, in the, in pandemic times, two weeks feels like two years. But it's only early October and we have a, we have a long way to go before the end of the year. And, and, and we're confident that kids could make that transition and that we would fully support them with that transition.
Can I just add one thing, Marty? I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just recall when we were doing orientation and with cohort C, a dad called me and we, we, we just had this really wonderful conversation. And he wanted or asked or requested an orientation for cohort C children and families because it's such a unique community. He wanted to begin to build his community and, and, and kind of network with the families who had chosen the cohort C. Because it is, it's very unique. And, and, and we made that happen so that they could talk and they could, you know, so. And in some levels, there might only be a couple of children, but I could see them branching out and, and growing and evolving, you know, and that, that particular unique community.
So much, so much faith in our teachers' ability to, to build community and nurture those connections and make kids feel welcome. And that's what they're really good at, as, especially as elementary school teachers. So those same skills would, would be brought to the, the students in cohort C. And so much confidence that that would be a rich experience for those kids. I think the, the question of the, the movement in and out, I, I'd start by saying, I, I think that cohort C has stabilized somewhat. Where, you know, we saw some movement early on. It, it feels like it's, it's become more stable. And I'd ask the principals if my sense of that is true. And so we, we might see less movement in and out. But we would, we'd have to acknowledge to those families that if they come out of cohort C, that, that we would have to reconnect them to one of the existing classrooms. And again, that's what I, I think our educators are really good at. They're really good at welcoming children into learning communities, whether it's a full school or an individual classroom. You know, we would, we would seek and some feedback from, from parents and from the community and from this school committee about how we can make that a better experience. But I do think we have to honor that, that fluidity. We have to understand that children and families do have that option still to move in and out of cohort C. As we've said before, it, it sometimes takes some time to create the schedules and develop the placement. So that's something that even now can't necessarily happen overnight. But we try to move on it as quickly as we can. Frankly, there are some. some districts that are taking a much harder line on that and that are requiring, you know, sort of this three-week waiting period. And credit to our administrators for, for moving on that more quickly and being willing to assist families who want to move in and out of Cohort C. So we, you know, I think it's the commitment that we have now, we would have to maintain, understanding that a child would wind up with a different classroom teacher if they came out of Cohort C.
Thank you. Other question right now. Earlier, we heard from Seal, and she mentioned recommendations from Jean regarding special education students. I'm wondering if you could speak to what those recommendations are and remind everybody what those are and how this plan reflects recommendations in our special ed students.
We have on the call, People Services Director Jean Fontaine is with us. Just to clarify, Ryan, are you asking about, in relation to how this plan would serve special education students, or more globally, about bringing additional students back who are on IEPs?
Both. Who was mentioned that there were specific recommendations for reconsidering. I want those to be repeated or noted. And then how does this plan address, maybe how levels will be addressing this?
Ms. Fontaine, are you able to?
Yeah. So to be honest, I'm not sure what the recommendations that she's referring to. I think the last meeting you had said that you pretty much gave me, you were comfortable with, with me and the special education supervisors targeting and identifying specific students that we felt needed more in-person learning time, and we have done that. So I think at our meeting in September, I had noted that we had already brought in the preschool on September 14th. We brought in our intense special needs students on September 14th. On October 5th, we brought in five more in-district programs, or at least offered it to those families. Not every family took us up on the offer, but we, and we have also begun to target another tier of students that would, that we would identify to bring in for increased in-person learning. Those are students who don't access a specialized program, but may have a generous amount of special education staff support throughout their program in maybe a general education classroom. So we're in the process of targeting those small groups of students to be able to bring them in for more in-person learning time. All of the students that we've identified and brought in to date are accessing four or four and a half days of in-person learning. So we'll continue to do that. Honestly, this, I think the model that's being proposed tonight would work nicely at the elementary level to be able to identify kids and bring them in. It will allow them to access the classroom time with their general ed teacher and then potentially get supports from special educators and related service providers on the off-cohort time. So I think it, it does lend itself to a little bit ease, easier scheduling. But regardless of what plan we, is adopted or however the plan is tweaked moving forward, we will definitely continue to target and identify kids that need more services and in-person learning and continue to bring them in as we have been doing.
Thank you.
David? So one thing that I wanted to make sure we had time to talk a little bit about, I mean, I really appreciated the, the comment about uncharted territory. But there are school districts that are ahead of us, especially in Connecticut. And I would love a discussion about what we can learn from the districts that are more aggressive than us and having more kids back. How is the safety working for them? What can we learn from them? I think it's a mistake if we don't at least talk about what we can learn from districts that are ahead of us and getting kids back into schools.
I'm happy to start. Interestingly, this, this model was one that came to us from a community in Connecticut. I think it was Westport. And there is a, at least one other Massachusetts community that we're aware of that, that does this. But I think Connecticut has the, sort of the half-in-person, half-at-home learning model, you know, more frequently used. So we do try to sort of reach across the border and, and learn from what's happening in Connecticut. I think honestly, the, you know, in many ways, it's, it's a different, it's a different regulatory climate. It's a, there's, there's different guidance coming out of state agencies. And so the way Massachusetts has approached this has been very different, for better or worse, than, than Connecticut. I think we, we would like to learn more from what's happening in Connecticut. I honestly, I don't know if they are more aligned to a three-foot physical distancing standard. And perhaps there's someone with us here tonight that, that might know that. But I think it's, you know, we're, we're with this new model, this new proposal, this new plan, we're, we're committed to the six-foot standard that seems to be the standard that is still advanced by the CDC. It's still the distancing threshold that is in place relative to someone being a close contact. So, you know, if there, if there are lessons to be learned from our neighbors in Connecticut, I would love to, you know, contact and reach out. And if there's anybody on the call or in this room who, who can point us in a particular direction, I'm always open to looking at some, some other models. In Massachusetts, I, I did ask the Executive Director of the Superintendent's Association just the other day if there was any district that had brought students back on a three-foot standard in Massachusetts. And he said he was not aware of a single district that had done that. So the, the six-foot standard, the six-foot safety standard still seems to be, and I believe for good reason, still seems to be the standard that Massachusetts schools are adhering to. I don't know if that's helpful, but I hope it is.
Thanks. I recently heard Plainville, Connecticut was three feet.
Three feet.
Someone maybe that.
Yeah, you have a question?
Just a quick follow-up to that. Superintendent, do you know if the Connecticut district that you mentioned that's doing this model, do you know if they started out the school year with this model, or if they transitioned like we're trying to do?
I'm not sure. I don't know. Does any of our principals, are you aware?
Westport. I don't know if they started out. I think, I believe they did, but we can check. But it's Westport, Connecticut.
Yeah. So in talking with, with some folks over the last couple of days about this proposal, one of the questions that's come up is, you know, kids are going to be staying home on a more frequent basis for sniffles, you know, going to school for the sniffles and, you know, we know is not, is not good. And, you know, that's not something we want to have happen, just like we don't want our staff to go to school sick. We don't want the kids to either, obviously. But when they're, when they have the sniffles and they're not feeling terrible, right now in the current model, as difficult as it is, and, you know, I understand that and completely, you know, respect that where it lands, students do have the opportunity to access education from home. So I don't know, that, that would certainly be, I think, a, you know, a trade-off that some people are seeing in this model, that I think would need to be thought about a little bit, whether or not, and Amy, you were mentioning, you know, sort of as the scope and sequence and, you know, progression of the curriculum being fairly consistent across classrooms with the understanding that every teacher, you know, teachers bring the art to the art and science of education. You know, is it possible that that Cohort C is going to be, you know, available to students who are sick? I don't know. That's just something that has come up in, in conversations I've been having with folks. So I don't know if anybody can address that or talk a little bit about what they're, what they're thinking around those.
In other words, how we would, how this model serves students who might have to be home if they're sick?
Or even students who are quarantined, potentially, who may not be exhibiting any symptoms of COVID, but because of, you know, contact tracing, or, you know, going out of state, or things like that. I just think, I, you know, think we need to think about that.
I think it's a great point. And I don't know, principals have any thoughts on that? I think we would, we would rely on sort of maybe the more traditional tried and true measures to keep kids on pace with their, with their peers if they're out. You're right, we're going to see that happening with greater frequency. And I suppose that's a, that will be a challenge regardless of which model. But as you point out, currently, they are able to access the classroom remotely. I think what we said earlier is we questioned sometimes the, the efficacy of that for our youngest learners, you know, accessing instruction remotely for children who, especially at the younger elementary levels. But it could be a trade-off, as you suggest.
I'm wondering, one of the, some of the feedback that we've gotten from parents related to the A, B cohort being morning, afternoon, et cetera, are concerns that students tend to be at their best, especially at the elementary school age, in that morning time, and that the afternoon might be a shift for students to have to get on track academically at that point in the day after having had time at home, as opposed to the other way. I'm curious if you guys discussed it all, or would be open to discussing it all, or if we think it would just be more, more shifting of things around, sort of a mid-year swap, old-school kindergarten style, where like halfway through the year, which by my count, February break is roughly 15 school weeks away from that October 26th, and there are roughly 15 school weeks after it, to trade models so that students have equal access to both time slots if this were to work out? Is that something that came up at all, or anything you guys would endorse, or what would be your thoughts?
If we were to make the switch sort of mid-year that you're describing, I think I'd want to carefully survey parents to see if that made sense for them. But in terms of the, you know, morning learning versus afternoon learning, perhaps one of our principals could, could weigh in on that.
We talked about this this morning, actually, and Donna had a really great quote. So I'm gonna, does she remember?
No. Well, we were at a workshop with Irene Pontus. And if you know anything about literacy, she's like a guru in literacy. And she said she, I remember when we were at the workshop, she said she has no idea where that came from, that who decided that kids can only read in the morning and can't read in the afternoon, or can only write in the morning and can't write in the afternoon. And she was just a little irked, you know, when we were talking about the workshop schedule, and it's got to all be scheduled in the morning, you know, because they do their best learning. And she said there's really no research that bears that out. So I'm going to trust, I use her quote a lot, when teachers are doing their schedule and trying to decide when to place different subjects in different areas. But I do want to acknowledge that I think a lot of families feel that that is problematic for their child to be at home, shift gears, and come into school. And when we talked about the nuances of the plan that we think will evolve, I think that's a nuance that would need to evolve, to think about that, you know, what does that look like? Would there be a swap? Would, as Superintendent O'Shea said, would we survey and see if that's something that, that if, if this is adopted, that we would, we would want to do for the kids? But.
I worry that that would, the possible shift would be an even bigger disruption for our families. So now the families who are like, oh my goodness, this is going to be a lot, now February, and we have to look at the metrics. I think from a safety perspective, maybe that isn't something that we can manage either. So I think, I think it would be very situational, that decision. And I also have tremendous amount of confidence in our teachers to kind of look at Cohort A, they're kind of like this in the morning. And so our, our lessons look like this, our learning looks like this. And in the afternoon, that could change. And so the teachers will ebb and flow with whatever, with whatever walks in the door. And that could also change from day to day. It's why we love what we do. It's, it's never quite the same each day. We could maybe stand to slow it down a little bit with all the things during the pandemic. But I think the teachers will, will also pivot like we're asking folks to do right now.
There we go. I, just on that particular topic, I tend to disagree. I just look at that as it's not fair. Personally, I know it's all going to be an individual family. I'm in Cohort A. I'm the only, I think Suzie and I are the only two that are affected by this with regards to Cohort A. I'm on the committee. You're in Cohort B, sorry. You're in Cohort B, I'm in Cohort A. I personally don't feel it's fair, even though I would prefer to always be in Cohort A and have my kids going in the morning every time. From a fairness standpoint, I think that would be something I would have to really think through and would have a hard time kind of, you know, signing off on, oh, it's going to be like this for the rest of the year, just because it's just from a fairness standpoint, just not fair for those families that are on. My kids, personally, they, they, well, in the afternoon, they're completely different whenever I have all these kids at sports. And it's probably completely different from what the earlier kids are. So I think it changes. I think they definitely have more energy at different times of the day. And containing that energy and utilizing it, getting what you're trying to accomplish is very difficult at different times of the day, in my opinion. But I'm obviously looking from a sports telescope or a, you know, scope. And, you know, that's obviously different from the education. But I think we should, thinking through that piece of it. But before we get to that, this, this survey, are we going to come back to the survey? Are we gonna, we're gonna share this with everybody? And can you just walk everybody through it again? Because I think I wrote it down wrong. Is it one strongly agree, one strongly disagree?
One was, one was strongly agree, and five was strongly disagree. I hope that's what I said earlier.
Okay. That's what I wrote down. I just honestly, completely. So how many, how many, we had 782 responses.
Yep.
What does that represent?
That's, that probably, I suspect there might be households where two caregivers responded, and maybe there's households where there was, where there was no responses. But we were estimating that we had about 700 or 800 households, I think, K to five. So it's a great response rate.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, you know, and I'm happy to project it if, if the committee wants that. Again, acknowledging, as we did earlier, that, that this represents, you know, our parents reported to us that this would be a significant challenge, that they spent considerable time developing plans and routines, family schedules, work schedules. And obviously, we want to be very respectful of that. And I, I think it was important feedback that we received. We really learned what was important to the parents in this community. We learned that, you know, they perhaps didn't understand if it was, if they were going to be able to manage their child's education as effectively. We certainly heard that it would present scheduling challenges. It seemed that we had some, some decent feedback that they appreciated that it might achieve a better balance between synchronous and asynchronous. But, but still, many families reported that they felt that it didn't. Screen time was, was sort of mixed. I think we were across the board there in terms of how families perceive that. But it might be worth spending some time But it might be worth spending some time uh thinking about the the experience of parents with our current model versus the experience that we're imagining for parents under the proposed model. Uh, I wonder if any of our principals would be willing to speak to that. Certainly, you know, we've, we've heard and listened to parents since the beginning of the year. We think that this will be a plan that will make students independent and perhaps be easier for parents to manage their, help manage and support their children's education, but but maybe one of our principals could speak to that and and talk about what the, what we're uh imagining or expecting or hoping for uh the parent experience with this plan.
Who's going to unmute first? I think, so I can speak for for my experience at Blueberry. So we, the emails with regard to not being able to connect, not having enough contact with the teacher, and I, you know, just so many struggles with regard to technology early on. That was a big, that was a big complaint, or a, you know, source of, piece of feedback that we got. The other thing that was difficult was the the lack of consistency. Last week, we had a a student who really had a hard time separating from his caregiver, and the the parent looked right at me and she said, it's because nothing's consistent for my son, you know, and 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 so that really spoke to me in that moment. It took us a good while to to get him calm and and get him back into the classroom. And he did, he did fine, thanks to the staff. So those have been the the big complaints that that I've been getting. I don't know if, I think Donna and, well, I know Donna and Maria have been getting the same. We we talk every day, lots of times a day.
So so the tech issues have have created a great frustration um by many. But I also had a parent I talked to who called, and her daughter loved school uh uh up until this year, and really was struggling with the remote learning, was fine when she came, but did not want to be on the Zoom and really melted down. And so I think for some families, it's been challenging to that aspect of it.
The in-person days are successful for kids. The home days are are challenging. We've heard that a lot.
We've heard even when the technology is cooperating.
Correct.
That it it can be challenging, and we've heard about, you know, we've tried to achieve a good balance between synchronous and asynchronous instruction, but our educators, to their credit, they're they're so eager to stay connected to the kids that are at home. And and so, but that can be challenging on on the home front again, especially with our youngest learners trying to access Seesaw or Google Classroom or or navigate the technology. A lot of the connectivity issues have smoothed out, but still, some of the the challenges are there. So Sue, I don't know if there's anything to add.
Yeah, I just want to clarify maybe with the principals a little bit about the nature of the assignments shifting during the time when students are learning remotely to tasks that are um potentially more independent for students, um, maybe some asynchronous specials and some synchronous specials where parents don't need to be teaching those core academic subject areas. Is that something you can speak to or clarify?
I just want to go back first, and then I I can talk a little bit about that. I think our, our, I know that our vision for this plan is that we want the students in school, and we want the consistency, and we needed to come up with something where we could get them in person as much as possible in a safe manner, and it's felt like the way to do that, so that they could have the connection to the school community in person. That was, that was really the forefront of 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 presenting this. We could get them in full capacity safely, we would do it in a heartbeat. I think everyone knows that and and understands that, so giving them more in-person learning without that long duration of not being connected to their school community, or being connected in person in a different way. So those three days, we felt and we're hearing can be very complicated and difficult for the kids, for all the layers we've already talked about. So we're hoping for that in-person piece, and then their afternoon is structured in a way where they can do developmentally appropriate tasks. And it will reinforce or enhance what's been taught at school or extend perhaps some some of what they've done at school. It's not going to be a day that's not structured, or an afternoon that's not structured, or morning that's not structured. It'll be very, very clear what the tasks are, and the teachers will, and and again, that will evolve depending on what they're working on and what's happening with the curriculum. So that's the vision of of what that morning or afternoon at-home learning would look like. And again, that special subject being a connection, you know, in the morning or afternoon as well for the students.
I think it's important to acknowledge that the sort of at-home learning that was happening in the spring won't look anything like the at-home learning that we're imagining uh under this plan, and you know, one of the essential differences is that, you know, students, if they have questions, either they'll have them answered before they leave school that day, or they'll know that they have an opportunity to see their teacher the next day, rather than waiting five days, and that that in itself, I think, I would imagine, creates a lot of frustration for kids and and creates frustration at home. So just having that that daily connection and and kids having that that sense that I get to see my teacher tomorrow to ask my teacher about this, I think that would seem to me to create you know, a lot of, it would be good for children's mindset and and create a better experience for kids while they're learning at home. So I would, I would want everyone to know that the at-home learning will be very different than the at-home learning that kids experienced in the spring. Just the very fact that I've heard, and maybe the principals can speak to this, I've heard teachers tell us that uh having children bring materials to and from school is a challenge, and and getting um getting books and materials and supplies to children has been a challenge. So if they're in school every day, they're able to bring home the the paperwork, the assignments, the uh the read, the the readers that they need, so I I know our principals can describe that more artfully than I, but that alone seems like it would create a more smooth learning experience for kids while they're at home.
Yep, um, and I truly appreciate everything that you guys have pulled together, and I think it is fabulous. I I guess the one things I am having a struggling with, number one, the survey I struggle with because I don't really understand it, and I I don't know whether parents gave feedback and really didn't understand what they were giving feedback on. It's obvious this plan is a reduction of screen time. We all want, but parents are saying they don't think they need reduced screen time. It kind of completely confuses me. And socially, this is a better plan for the cohort K, cohort A and cohort B, which they are saying something completely different than this, uh, which makes me think that they didn't under, actually stand what we were asking, or maybe the whole plan hadn't been out there yet. So I would say we probably want to re-ask here, um, because this does not make sense to me intuitively on the two main things that this plan brings, um, the A and B. Cohort C concerns me. It concerns me a lot because it it does feel like we're just completely disrupting everything for them, and that that's hard. I mean, that that definitely is something that I'm thinking about. But this survey doesn't make any sense with the, you know, just natural, you know, thoughts of this plan, of what you're trying to accomplish, and I I truly believe that they are accomplishing that socially and, you know, from a reduction of screen time. So um, I don't know, I'm I'm having a hard time looking at the survey and rationalizing what what is going on from the parent's standpoint, um, because I think they're reacting more based on schedules, which I reacted based based on schedules as well. It it's, it's difficult with uh two, two, uh, you know, people in a household that have a job plus they have this on their plate. But I don't get how that, this survey came out, um, and I just don't think it's an accurate representation of what the actual thoughts are.
I I think, I think um, I was eager to have this conversation tonight to help everyone fully understand the plan, and in fairness, it it's, I suppose, it would have been challenging to participate in the survey based on the email that I sent. I've tried to make it detailed and lengthy, but I think hearing from our our principals and having this conversation might put parents in a better position to evaluate this. But again, just totally acknowledging that this creates some significant challenges for families in terms of childcare. I I I want to make sure that we 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 heard that loud and clear, and 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 we want to be respectful of that, so.
Is it on topic, or can we call someone else? Is it on the same topic?
Go ahead.
Side track, um, no matter how many times, it, we, I'm an adult and I do it, so think about the kids. But anyway, I I think it's, I think it's really important to just consider how much, you know, you stated it before, you know, how kids have regressed socially and emotionally, you know. I don't, actually, that was the special education students, but I think in general, socially, emotionally, academically, you know, kids have taken a a significant hit over the last eight months. One of the things that, you know, Donna, as you were talking, you know, I was tearing up thinking about, you know, sending my su, my child off to her first day of school when, you know, we took the picture outside and we sent her back inside to go to school. And then when they come to school, there are losses as well, you know, a first grader is not able to access the same things that they were able to access when they were in kindergarten. There's no, there's no dress up, there's no, they're playing alone on a yoga mat, you know, they can't interact with with other children. So one of the questions that comes to my mind is with this model, does that does that further limit, like, the free play? You know, I I understand the academic value that is behind this, for sure. But the the free play, the opportunity to just, you know, for kids to just go outside and and create, you know, uh an experience that, you know, helps them problem solve, helps them build some transferable skills that, you know, we know are the bedrock of like, you know, child development. Does this, does this, you know, kind of chip away more at that? And will that be another loss? What will recess time look like? You know, like, what, how does this impact that, the ability of kids to have that socialization that has already been ripped away so much?
Anyone?
As I, as I go.
So I I I would like to, I I think it's a, it's a great question, and I have some thoughts, but I I think we'd probably benefit from, I don't know, Sue, if you have any thoughts or?
I want, can I just, I want to respond, Suzie. Um, so spending lots of time in kindergarten, first grade, well, across the board, but um, I'm watching teachers, even in third grade today, um, they were using one hundreds and one hundreds blocks and thousands cubes, um, working, they were six, maintaining their social distancing six feet apart and still building these wonderful towers, and so that was such a social and academic experience all simultaneously. And I know that we won't have as much time for for recess. I mean, that's just, that's part of the plan. You know, and watching in in kindergarten, the same thing where the kids can spread out, they've got their math manipulatives, they're engaging in play and learning at the same time, and I think our teachers recognize that they do need to build in those social moments for for the kids as well. You know, our specials teachers do a really great job of engaging the kids as well, you know, in in their small groups, or, you know, they're still having, having some fun. It's, it's hard to 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 not, um, that's a hard part to swallow too, you know, as a, as a educator, as a mom, as a principal, all those things, but again, I I think we will capture those moments as best as we can during their during their structured learning times through the workshop model, still being collaborative, still embedding those social emotional, those skills for for turn-taking and sharing and that we do every day throughout our academic curriculum. So I know it's not a perfect answer.
If I could maybe jump, yeah, jump in on that. I I think we have to remember that the teachers are very attuned to social emotional issues, and yet they're feeling divided, taking care of the kids on the screen and taking care of the person. If we take one of, if we take the screen away, they can really focus in on that, those kids in front of them, and really look for those opportunities to provide that. I agree, the kindergarten teachers, even the way they, the desks are arranged, they're still kind of sitting in a circle, even though they're they're not at the same table like they used to. So I think, I think being in person and there, and having that teacher's undivided attention, I think they'll see some wonderful opportunities to make sure that happens, because the the teachers are very concerned about the social emotional learning that's happening.
One of the things in the pandemic that we've had to really deal with is some of those activities that kids do. We need them to do naturally. They love to do them. They, they're not safe right now. Um, and so that's another kind of, the limit is not necessarily based on the schedule, but based on the pandemic.
I'm guessing the teachers at home, if you remember that slide we had with all the wheels turning, I'm guessing the teachers that are tuned in at home or just want to jump through the screen and say, this is what we'll do, you know, we've got a whole list of things, because this is why we're elementary school teachers. This is our life, our world, and we will build that, and I mean, I'm, I'm going to say, throw out a kudos to Mrs. Bridges, who said, I did have to, I know how to do it. I can help everyone do the academics, do the the that important breaks and 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 social emotional activities that the kids need, so I I I defer to them too. I mean, it's, it's what they're really, really good at.
To contrast that with what learning would look like if we tried to bring everybody in, where you have eighteen, nineteen children, even if that would fit in a classroom, they don't have that wiggle room. They don't have that ability to get to learning centers. And so the 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 small class sizes allow for the kids to move and use those manipulatives that that Amy talked about, and I think education has come so far in in terms of integrating, you know, the social experience with the academic experience. And I agree with Donna. I I'm sure our elementary teachers would have some wonderful ideas. And and, you know, I I don't know where this uh discussion is headed, if we're going to carry it over to next week, but these are some of the things that we could bring back to you, you know, there's, we, we, I'm sure we're all at our 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 notes and our lists of questions that that you have that are very thoughtful and excellent questions, and I'm sure they're on the minds of our parents as well, so we certainly could bring back some some clarity and some additional thoughts on a lot of these things.
I would also, I want to add, I think recess is a a point of stress for some kids because it's, oh, make sure you're six feet away, oh, make sure you, you know, it's just, it's, it's a lot of redirecting in that time. Kid, I, we also see kids who have, you know, wonderful imaginations, they're doing some fun stuff in the dirt. You know, credit to the kids, we played a lot of red light, green light, um, and and hide and go seek with with kids, but it can be really stressful for for some kids because they just, can I do the, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, the time we're always vigilant about these safety precautions throughout the day, and and recess is is not exempt from that right now.
Yeah, so there's a lot of things on my mind. Um, I I think, first of all, we we need to, we need to listen to both our parents and our teachers. And the teachers are telling us loud and clear that the current model can be improved. And that's real. And I think a couple of things about that, that I think informs why the survey results are the way they are. I think it's important to recognize that when you do the math, the amount of time that kids are in school looks pretty much the same. So why am I going to upend my life if my kid's not getting more time in school? And I think we need to be very clear with parents that it's completely different time. And I think when, when I've talked to teachers, they've made very clear to me that having a small class, just focusing on the kids in front of them is an amazing gift to them and those kids. And they can make incredible strides with those kids when they are just focused on the kids in front of them. And right now we're asking them to focus not just on those kids in front of them, but the kids who are through the computer. And so I think it's important to recognize it's an unfair math comparison. Because it's different types of time and the teachers are going to be much more efficient when they don't have to juggle remote and in-person simultaneously. So I think that's really important to recognize. I think in the current model, we're asking too much of our kids at this grade level to try to manage all of the screen time. We're just asking too much of them. We're asking too much of our teachers to try to teach kids in front of them and kids through the screen. But in the proposed model, we're asking too much of our parents. And I think we've got to figure out a way that we can make things better for the kids, for the teachers and for the parents. Because I mean, we're crazy if we think this isn't real, the survey. It's real. I think that we can educate the parents better so that maybe they will feel more informed when they do the survey. But I mean, I think about my life, when my kids were in elementary school, I couldn't do this. There's no possible way. And that's the feedback we're getting. And I think we need to recognize, even if it's better for the teachers and the kids, if our parents can't do it, it's not going to work. And so what I really want to do is I want to say, like, we are a collective team. The school committee, superintendent, his staff, the principals, we've got to come up with something better. And if we can't, then we've got to improve the model we have. Because people know they can live in the model that we have. And so I really want to focus on this idea of like, we need to improve through iteration. And I think this model is getting us to a place where we're going to be better. But there's no way we can implement this right now. Because it will be upheaval that will happen with our families. It's just not, it's, we can't do it. And so for me, I really want us to keep getting, keep iterating on this and try to get to something that's better. Is it possible that we can do learning remote at school or learning remote at Greenwood or the community house or whatever? Is there a way that we can figure out a way to help the families who have two parents working, who can't possibly do drop off and pickup two and a half hours apart? We've got to do better for those families. So that, that's what I'm thinking.
So just, just a couple of things. Number one, going back to survey, I, number one was not saying it wasn't that accurate. But I can tell you as a school committee member, I did not take it. I'm one of the only people in here, aside from Suzy, who has a elementary kid. And why I did not take it, I didn't know the details of the plan. So how is a parent taking this? I'm not really sure they knew the full detail of everything after all the principals were able to present. At this point in time, I could at least have a little bit more clarity around it, but I personally chose not to. Because I wasn't fully clear on where we were going and I didn't have all my questions answered. So I think we were premature. I'm not saying that everyone didn't answer truthfully, I'm just saying that I don't know how. I personally couldn't answer it, so I'm, I'm really concerned as to how they had enough information to truly understand what was being suggested. You come back to it and, you know, the core parts of this, and I agree, you got to worry about the families here. But for the kids, reduce screen time, core and social emotional, this plan by far does better things for our kids than what the current plan does. There's a lot of other issues associated with this plan that I think we really need to think through. But from a survey standpoint, that is what I was saying, it wasn't, it was inaccurate. It was premature in my opinion, hence why I did not take it.
Just to build on, on what Kevin said, I, I like the way you framed that, Kevin, that, that seemed to make a lot of sense to me is, I, I think as we went through this process, and it was a very intensive process over the last couple of weeks, I think we learned a lot, we learned a lot from our teachers. We learned from, we learned a lot from our parents in this survey. And, you know, I, I like the idea of the iteration. Is there, is there an iteration of this that, that would address some of the concerns that the principals have identified and that we've heard from staff? Are there components, are there core parts? I think it's the phrase that someone used, are the core parts of this that, that we could, that we could amplify and, and expand on? I, I think that's, that's what's been going through my mind over the last couple of days. But, but I appreciate the, you know, the opportunity to learn. As a group, we are all in this together, we're in this with parents and teachers and kids. And, and as a, as a governance team, and so we, we have learned so, so much about what, what needs to be improved upon. And we take that very seriously. And, you know, we might need some additional time from you to, to think that through. We might need to gather some additional information from parents now that we've all had an opportunity to talk this through and understand it more. I've learned some things tonight. There's been some light bulbs that have gone off over my head. So I really liked the way Kevin framed that. We have to come up with something that is, is tenable and manageable for all of our stakeholders. So I appreciate that, the way you said that.
Kevin's comment about the two and a half hour space for drop off and pickup sparked a slightly unrelated logistical question that I meant to ask earlier and forgot about. Which is what does this look like as far as arrival, pickups, et cetera? Both for our students who walk with crossing guards availability in the middle of the day? Also for our students who are busing, including students who don't necessarily live in town? Is there, have you, have you guys already discussed that? Is it premature to address that?
No, I, I don't think so. We, I know Tom Mazza has, we've identified the crossing guards as an issue that we would have to work through with the, with the town. And our principals are experts at car lines. That's a, that's an important skill for an administrator in Long Meadow. So I, I would defer to them on the, on the car line question you have. I, I think the car lines haven't been as problematic as we thought they were going to be back in August because we've got half the population coming in anytime. But anything else to add in terms of the, the safety and transportation arrival dismissal?
We've been, we actually started a staggered dismissal because I was a little concerned slash nervous apprehensive about, you know, getting kids out and, you know, safely out and in the right directions. They've done a tremendous job. Our families are, you know, doing a better job of adhering to car line rules. I don't know if that's just because they're half of them. But we've, I've been really impressed with the, the speed at which kids are, are exiting. I do think, right, the, the colder weather will bring a longer car line and that's, that is typical. And we will, we'll mitigate that as best we can as well. We've got staff, we've got staffing to do that, to help, you know, get kids safely in and out of the building. The crossing guards, as Tom had said, you know, he's going to help us secure the, the safety, you know, within the crosswalks. I can just add my two cents that as an observer, I've seen it go very smoothly. Now, I just don't know with the swap, like with the changeover, it would seem that it would go.
And do we have the busing ability mid-days that works out as well? Including for students out of town?
So yeah, the only school that we provide busing for at the elementary level is Wolf Swamp. And with the proposed time, making a midday run seems like it would be easily achieved. For students in the Medco program, we would probably run two buses, one bringing the students home who are getting out, but also a bus that's out there at the same time picking up availability of buses during the day is that it's much easier because there's capacity at that time. They're not being used like at drop off or dismissal in a normal schedule. So I don't think busing would be an issue under this, with this proposal.
Thank you.
So I agree that Kevin's point is really important. I feel like there's three main components of this plan. Academically, it's, it seems like a home run, as Kevin mentioned. I mean, having the students, eight or so students in front of you with, with no other students learning remotely and learning the skills for math, reading and writing. Four days a week, sometimes five days a week would be a huge, huge improvement. Health and safety wise, the experts are saying that it would still be safe to do this. And in terms of the social emotional piece, it would provide more consistency and also at least cuts the screen time in half, I think. But then the last component is logistically. So this presents some very significant barriers for many families. So I guess it just seems like no matter how amazing the plan is, if the parents can't get the kids there to experience the plan, then it isn't going to be feasible, it's just not going to work, unfortunately. I, I do think all the other pieces fit. And I am wondering, the same thing that Kevin mentioned, how can we get that third piece to fit in better so that we can make this work better for everyone? I don't have the answer. But I, obviously, a lot of people can think about it and let us know if they have any suggestions. I know that we have some, I know the teachers and admin have been working really diligently on this. And I do think the plan itself is amazing. It's just the logistical challenges for the parents are just insurmountable, unfortunately.
Jamie's point earlier, it's possible after hearing more details, the presentation from the principals and the superintendent, hearing the questions from us and elaboration to those questions as well as the safety information from our other guests, that people's opinions on this may be different based on receiving those details. So maybe it's possible to have a repeat of the survey or a more detailed version of the survey based on Ty's presentation. To get that information to find out if in fact the logistics are too much for people.
Can I add to that too? Maybe to add to the survey, you know, we do have some unanswered questions. So I, I would just be very upfront and add another slide. These are questions under consideration, you know, like, just so people are, you know, have the, the clear understanding of all the pros, cons and, and all the ambiguous components of this. Because I think that if, there might be an answer out there, you know? So if we can, if we can tap into somebody's, you know, thinking about this and how we can work through it, that would be great too. We're, we're building the plane while we're flying it. And, and I know that's a big phrase and nobody likes to hear it, but it's true. And I, I think this plan, I, I can echo what everybody said here, so I'll just say that. But I think the biggest challenge, you know, again, will be the logistics for sure for parents. And, you know, kids are experiencing stress. To some degree, they've also been very resilient. But if a parent's experiencing stress, how can that potentially impact the child's ability to really be available for that amazing learning experience? And so we have to consider that.
And I think the one other thing I just need clarity on, because I'm kind of racking through my brain, listening to everything. Is are we saying that the current model is unsustainable? Because this originally started with a request to, hey, how could this look different? And I know things have changed and this is, this is a lot difficult, I think, what we all thought in the beginning. But are we saying that it is unsustainable? Because I think what we're saying, Suzie's analogy over there. We got to make sure it's sustainable by the end of the year. Because we rebuilt this. Not working again, we got to be a little more sure. Now that we know a little more and we've, we've had time to experience it, would be my opinion. I just don't want it to be again. I guess my question is, is that not sustainable? Because it sounds like it's not.
With, with what we're currently expecting of children and what we're currently expecting of teachers, it's not sustainable. And so we need to, and, and we need to work through that. And, you know, if we have to work within the, the current envelope, the current schedule, if that's what ultimately is where we arrive, we'll, we'll still want to make some adjustments and we're still going to want to make this a better experience for children. And so, and I agree with you, we, we, we need, we've lived it now. We, we have a, a body of knowledge to make some good decisions on. I mean, we were, we were building the airplane in flight while blindfolded in August. At least now we're building the airplane in flight, you know, with, with some understanding of where we're headed, of where we want to go.
I just make one comment on that, I completely agree. And that's why I kind of sat back and listened to everything, you know, to, to this point is, you know, we're, we're rebuilding this. You know, and I'm going, not, not that the survey is the end all be all, but I'm asking questions. What are my, what were the alternatives? I mean, the, the parents didn't know that, how unsustainable it is, they feel it, everybody feels this. I mean, come on, whether you're in the classroom or whether you're at home, you know, doing this with your child in elementary school, you feel it. You know, so if you didn't know that that may be changing anyways, how's that changing? What do you want? Do you want this new model? Because it's unsustainable without, being a parent and not knowing that, answering these questions. I, I just don't think it's a, it's a realistic thing. So I think we got to be, and I think it's okay. I, I agree, we need to kind of look at it, this is, this isn't simple. So let's be upfront about it, you know, as, hey, this is where we're going. I don't know what my options are right now, you know, so I think. I think we need to look at this as, you're probably, we all look changes. We don't know, likely we got to really commit a little bit longer term to it now that we know. That's just my two cents on this, you know, as a parent. As some sitting with their child doing this, you know, this isn't, this isn't easy.
And just following up on that, thank you for the, those points, Jamie. I, I think it does make sense that it's hard to weigh in on a survey when you're not comparing A to B. You're not really sure what those things are. So I think that, that's a good point. I mean, I just, one thing that I want to speak to is just the level of stress that our teachers are under. And I think everybody needs to just acknowledge that that to me is the least sustainable part of the model we're in right now. I just, I don't. I, I just, I don't think our teachers can keep this up. We're asking them to do too much. I think if we're going to change the model we're in right now, we've got to look at what we're asking our teachers to do. I think we've heard some strong arguments that having a dedicated teacher for Cohort C is something that we can do relatively soon. That may be a change that's better for the Cohort C kids and is better for the classroom teachers teaching A and B. If there's any way we can make things better for those classroom teachers, I think we need to look at that as fast as we can. They are completely stressed out. They're tired. We need to help them because that, to me, is the weakest link in the current model. And if we start burning out our teachers after a month, I, I mean, I just don't, we, we can't continue to ask them to do what we're asking them to do.
So I think one of the main, thank you, Kevin. I think one of the main things we need to think about is if we were to try to improve the hybrid, then it could technically be no longer a hybrid. Because hybrid means that you're doing synchronous teaching and that's the challenge. It's doing two things and sometimes three things at once. So what would that look like? I mean hypothetically, so we keep the schedule we have, we keep this pseudo-hybrid model. But if we're going to improve it, we have to pull away the synchronous teaching. So what does that look like at home for the kids? If there's no longer synchronous teaching, we're back to asynchronous lessons for the kids three days a week, right? And we thought about this. This is something we thought about and talked about when we said, okay, let's look within the model that we have now. Can, and look at the really, the, the pieces of it that are not sustainable, that are exhausting for teachers, that are exhausting the children and stressing the children. That makes the days at home feel and look more problematic to us, if you think about it, right? Because you pull out the synchronous teaching, what do you provide for the kids? YouTube videos, packets of work? There are some districts, our understanding is that they, they have the two live days and then the kids have packets. We don't want to go back to that. Like, we don't want to go back to packets of, I don't want to call it busy work. That's like demeaning because I'm sure teachers everywhere work really hard to have meaningful learning experiences for children. But that's one of the things we have to think about as a team and as a community. What will it look like? We all agree it's not sustainable. So what does it look like? If not this, then what if we stay within this schedule? I, I, I don't have an answer except to, to play it out like I just said. And, and I don't think we want that. I don't know that we want that for children.
Can I, I just want to say something before I go. Is that what, and I have no skin in this game at all. But I think that it sounds like, I mean, school is really about teachers and kids. And I get that it's also about parents. But you really want the best for the people that are actually in that environment. And if you come up with a model that is going to work for teachers and kids and it's a temporary logistical problem to manage for the parents, maybe give them more time or have some opportunity for it to play out so that they can figure out ways to manage the change. And then at least you have that for the long while. Because you don't want to have it as an emergent, you know? Teachers start saying, I can't do this anymore. I mean, you know, it, that becomes a problem. And I personally, I mean, well, it wasn't just me, it was Dr. Tapper as well. We both felt that it was better for the kids for the consistency part of things. So maybe, maybe just give a little bit more time to the parents to figure this out. Because I think that for the well-being of kids and the people who teach them and the people who work with the people who teach them, it, it may be in the best interest to work out the logistical part of it and have the benefit of the emotional and social well-being that they get from the change. For what it's worth.
Thank you. Joanna, you have a question?
Thank you, Ryan. Yeah, and I, I know Susie echoed, but, you know, other people echoed of other people. And I, I super appreciate the, the effort that went into this. Definitely see, you know, as Jamie laid out, you know, the reduced screen time, you know, the academically, health and safety. They all laid it out beautifully, the benefits. I do agree also though that the, the, not just even the childcare, but the, you know, the logistics for, for families. I, I think in some cases it goes a little bit beyond a temporary inconvenience though, when we're talking about possible job loss or, or business, you know, business loss or limitations to that effect. So I would definitely want to be, you know, get more information and be part of that, you know, process of, of, you know, maybe trying to come up with some ways to support the families in that way. In, in, in thinking about all those bigger pictures though, I did want to just express my thoughts about the Cohort B. I, I heard you all say you're going to reflect on it and try and come up with a balance. I think it's very important because I, as a school counselor, elementary school counselor, I spent the past four weeks going in and out of Zooms of, of every elementary level. And specifically with an eye for social emotional behavior and engagement. And I do find that in the afternoon, it is, it's very hard. The kids are tired or they're, you know, disengaged or, you know, they feel like, you know, they've just come off a, a two-hour break. It's just very hard to get them, again, re-engaged and kind of with their thinking hats on. So I do see that as a little bit of a concern for the Cohort B students. And so I would just express my appreciation for the continued reflection and, and balance-seeking for, for those students. And the Cohort C students, I know, again, teachers are amazing, so I know that they're going to work to make them feel engaged. But that social emotional piece for them as well is huge. Thank you.
Joanna, you're remote, right? The, the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, but you know what? Principal Sec, you just made me think too that the, the other concern, thank you for saying that. The other concern I was having with the Cohort B kids, aside from being maybe tired or disengaged coming back, is that if there is a level, and I guess this is again where your reflection will come into play, if there's a level of frustration with what they have to do in the morning, you know, if you, if you start having students saying, I don't want to go to school in the afternoon now because my morning was so yucky. Now you're really looking at a kid who's disengaged and that's the core content that they're supposed to be, you know, learning. So, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. And Joanna, thank you for bringing that up. A long time ago, we had, I had brought up a potential idea. I have no idea if it would work or not. But it was talking about, you know, making an optional half-day. And, and again, this was just KDA two at the time. And I know that, I, I appreciate the fact that you're thinking about all the students in elementary, I absolutely do. But the idea being that, you know, students could, all students come in in the morning and I know the logistical challenges with space and everything would have to be figured out. But then with an optional half-day for people who did want to take their kids home with synchronous or asynchronous experiences in the afternoon. And it's just, I'm bringing it up again only from the standpoint of maybe there's a way to satisfy more people if we can get more kids in school, in, in-person learning. That's just me throwing that out there and like letting it land. I don't expect a response. The other, the other pieces, wondering, again, practically speaking, there are some districts in Connecticut, you know, in, in response to Marty's question earlier, who've actually used the Wednesday to alternate. And again, it's still a, it's still problematic because it's still, you know, incorporates the hybrid component, which we know is not sustainable. But I'd be interested in finding out a little bit more and I can try to do some digging. I know we received some emails that sort of articulated that. Some districts are also doing fully, like full weeks of hybrid swapping, cohort swapping. So, you know, we can, I can dig a little bit. I work down there and I have colleagues still down there, so I can dig a little bit and see how that's working out and give you some feedback. But I don't know if we've given any thought to adding more in-person time during the Wednesdays for kids. Since we're determining that a cleaning is not that big of an issue. No.
I think the, the Wednesday option, you know, that, that could be something that we, we take a look at regardless. That, that might be an opportunity for us to bring students in on that day on alternating basis. So that, that's sort of one of those components, that's one of the components of this plan that's maybe sort of a standalone thing, I think. And I, I might be jumping to a conclusion that I'll need some feedback on. But I, I, I think that's a standalone element.
Marty, can I, can I just talk about the Connecticut thing? So I live in Connecticut and two of my kids are in high school and they are one week in, one week out. But it's a different configuration for the middle school and a different configuration or, or hybrid model, if you will, for the elementary school. So they've got that option, one week in-person, one week out, remote, fully remote for the high school, but not younger than that, that I've seen. I'll look into that too, but.
Yeah, the district that I'm talking about, it's for everyone. So, yeah, I'm interested in knowing how that, that's working.
I just wanted to quickly follow up on Susie. I know she brought that up a while ago, about the half-day. I don't know if it's possible, but if, if we could take that schedule that was designed, where it had all the, the reading, writing and math workshops in the morning, I guess even if we could do K one to K or K two. And then the option for parents, if they wanted to pick the kids up in the afternoon, you know, before lunch and do the rest of the stuff at home. But at least everyone would still get that morning, the morning skills of the math, reading and writing, if that schedule was able to happen.
I could just, I think we want to be a little bit protective of our Wednesdays. I think one of the most valuable parts of our Wednesdays is also the teacher collaboration time. And I think we need to make sure that we have that also as part of the plan. Because I think the teachers are really using that wisely and, and I think it's been really beneficial for them.
Well, definitely. And like, knowing that I see cars and I want to like be very public about this. I see teachers' cars at, at the schools at, you know, seven, eight o'clock at night. Yes, absolutely. I mean, they need that time. So I, yeah, I was definitely thinking half-day, half-day in the morning.
So in the interest of moving forward, what do you think about Marty wrapping up the, I mean, the focus of the idea, maybe to Jamie and Kevin's points that we've made a few times is after this presentation, getting another survey that maybe gets the impression of parents have math. But see if it's any different. And bring that information back to us before we consider voting on this plan. Does the committee feel about that? More information first?
No, I, I appreciate that. I appreciate the, the opportunity to gather some more feedback from parents after the conversation that we've had tonight. I think that would be really helpful. And I think what I could add to that survey is an open-ended response at the end just to make sure that parents have an opportunity to, you know, address anything that maybe the survey doesn't. So we'll include that. The scale on the survey, so I learned afterwards it should have been reversed. I think I'll probably keep it the way it is so as to not create any additional confusion. But I did get that feedback that typically it's strongly disagree is one and strongly agree is five. But my apologies for any confusion that that created. But I think that, you know, again, just to reinforce that that survey was really intentionally preliminary. Oftentimes, what normally happens is you do a public presentation and then you'll gather some feedback after that as part of the public comment period. But I appreciate the, the committee's willingness to let me issue that survey ahead of time just to, in the interest of full transparency and making sure that we're very open with the entire community all at once about what was happening. And so I think to, to take this deliberatively and, and thoughtfully and slowly and have another chance to put the survey out, I think that's a, that's great. I think that's, I would appreciate and, and welcome that opportunity if that makes sense to the committee.
Great, thank you. And I would also say, not that all the other suggestions don't have merit, but to maybe stay focused on what we've presented at the moment before we get all chemistry teach and get new iteration after iteration. See what, how people feel about this one. And then if it's poorly received, then we may have to talk about something else. Everyone go with that? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Your day started 20 hours ago.
Again, you've heard enough from me. I won't wear out my welcome.
Our next agenda item is the superintendent report, Marty, if you have more. Okay, Chair report, I'm going to echo probably what's said most of our meetings was, which is that we appreciate all the feedback that people give us via email. I think you'll see reflected in our questions that we ask during the presentation and our thinking and our comments. We do read your emails and we appreciate all of them. So please, and we do respect and appreciate your care, so please keep coming. I saw Armin.
Sorry, did you call on me? My internet's kind of, all right. So, yeah, just some extracurricular updates. For, as you may know, the senior class play is planned for March now with casting and preparations beginning in December, January, most likely. And events from other classes are being pushed to 2021 as well. However, many classes are also working on virtual events and ways to fundraise virtually. And then also, as we return to school, I'm glad to see that more works by authors of color are being included in the English curriculum. I know that it's a discussion that we had briefly over the summer. But it's evident that our teachers are making real strides toward these goals. And I know that while reopening is really our focus right now, the issue of racism as well, and that's always important, so. Good to see that.
Thank you very much, Armin, for bringing that up. You'll find next Tuesday when the committee calls are presented, excuse me, that we too have been talking about that lately and that is going to be a focus of ours. So thank you again for bringing that up. Do we have an LPVC report?
Not this evening.
Energy and sustainability?
Yeah, we did meet since our last meeting, but there was nothing that I need to bring to the committee.
Open space? We have, we have no subcommittee reports to make type new business. Marty, Klee Steering Committee?
We are in the process of putting together the steering committee for, to serve our partnership with the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity. We went through a round of focus group work with Klee. We will be preparing a community-wide survey with Klee.
We will be preparing a community-wide survey with Klee. They did some professional development for us in the summer, so our partnership with them is in full swing and with a specific focus on how can, how we can more equitably serve all stakeholders. So that steering committee is, will include about twenty to twenty-five people, Sue. And we need some school committee representation, we would like some. Is that where we're headed?
I, I'd like to get a couple of names. Um, probably two, maybe three, kind of have to be mindful of people who are together as a subcommittee. So two is probably a good number to think about, but you, Nicole already gave me her interest. Um, I think Kevin, two, did I hear that right, prior?
So, yeah, I mean, just to, to follow up, like, yeah, I'd love to do it, but I can't at those times.
Let me tell you the times and dates and times before you volunteer, um, everyone. Eleven, November third from four to six, uh, December first from four to six, December fifteenth from four to six, and January second from four to six. So I want to make sure it's kind of a wonky time for a lot of people, that four to six hour. But, um, if you think you'll be free then, it would be great to give your name. And if we have more than, I guess we'll put them in a bag and shake them and pick names.
Sue, can you tell us, what, what days of the week are those?
Oh, I'd have to go to my calendar.
Tuesdays?
Absolutely.
Thank, thank you.
All Tuesdays.
They're all Tuesdays.
Thank you, that was my question.
Do we have school committee meetings on any of those dates?
Not on the third.
No, those are not school committee knives.
Thanks, Diane.
Thanks, Diane. If, if, you know, unless somebody else has a, I'd love to be a part of it.
Take that back. January twelfth is a school committee meeting.
January second is the date. Did I say the twelfth, it's the second?
It says the twelfth on Tuesday.
Oh, I can't read my own writing, okay. Well, then it's definitely not that.
The twelfth is a Tuesday, though.
Nicole and Jana? Great, thanks.
Thank you for doing that, Sue.
Sure.
Would you mind emailing those dates after?
We'll do.
Good with that, so we can move on. All right. MASC resolutions?
I couldn't get you started. Uh, you'll recall, we shared with you the draft resolutions from the MASC. So a range of issues that the resolutions address. And it's really up to the committee how you want to handle that. If you wanted to just provide your own sort of, uh, individual feedback to the appropriate sort of legislative body, you could do that. Or if you wanted to try to reach some agreement as a committee on those resolutions, you could do that. And then the next step would be then to sort of appoint a delegate to the MASC virtual conference to represent the opinion of this body. Um, I know you have a lot of things on your plate. There's obviously some important issues that are articulated in those resolutions. Arguably, you could, you could kind of on your own sort of, um, communicate with who you needed to, to sort of stake out a position or use your role as a school committee member to advocate one way or another. So, um, it, it is a, it's up, so it's up to the committee, I suppose, how you want to, how you want to handle that.
Anybody want to share their thoughts on this?
I'll just speak for myself. I, I haven't thought about these. I've been thinking about the discussion we just had. So, I mean, I, I mean, I guess we could try and wing it, but that seems inappropriate for resolutions. I don't know, that's just where I am.
Same.
You've all been busy.
And these, and it's important, first, we don't have to do it. And secondly, they're non-binding, and we don't actually have the authority to make much of it happen. Any of it happen. So really, it's up to you, do you want someone to be a voting member to go to this? You could attend, is, we can all attend virtually, anyway, if we wish, correct? Just the workshop. So what are your feelings? The items, uh, the resolutions can be taken by us as a committee as we see fit. So it's not like we'd be ignoring the items if we wanted to bring them up as part of a committee discussion. But if you don't feel compelled to have our vote, then we don't need a voting member for that. That's the much, anyone?
All right. Based on the, um, goals about the anti-racism, uh, racism, resolution number three, is something that we're already, um, taking on, uh, you know, excitedly this year. So I don't think that, um, that would be one that we would need to, um, to vote on, because we've already expressed our interest, uh, through making it one of our goals.
Yeah, that's my point. If I could maybe briefly just read the titles, just so people know what we're talking about. The first one is our opinion on emcast and high-stakes testing, COVID-19 state funding. Uh, school committee anti-racism resolution, which is a prior one, is already noted, is something that we are focused on this year. Number four is lowering the voting age for municipal elections. Number five is supporting increased federal support and stimulus funding for public K-12 education. Number two, or six, six, retention of Medicaid revenue. Seven, attempts by the USDOA to direct funding to private schools. Eight, membership of a school committee member on the board of elementary and secondary ed. Number nine, providing equity for sexual orientation LGBTQ plus students, teachers, and staff. And ten, relative to the monitoring of attendance of students during the pandemic. As I noted, these are things that we can't take up and some of which we already have. Uh, so we still can do it for Long Meadow, whether we give a vote towards the state body. Are you comfortable with that idea, that we can bring these up as we see fit? No objection? Okay. Then we can do that. Which means there's a possible motion. I mean, the bottom, number twelve.
I moved that the school committee adjourned the October eighth, 2020 school committee meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hold call low. Rowan.
Yes.
Suzie? Jana?
Oh, sorry, it's delayed, yes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kevin? Yes, well, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.